Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Canton Planning Commission for October 4th, 2021. We always love to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and for those who may not have a flag handy, you can look at mine. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Awesome, thank you. Right, so let us see who's here. Commissioner Zubor, what you call the role?
Certainly, Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Eckenberger.
Wait a minute.
Yes.
Wait, 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 don't we have to give a little spiel about where we're from?
Oh.
All right, yes.
Please give a little spiel about where you're from.
Wayne County, Canton, Michigan.
Thank you, Commissioner Atariah. Commissioner Eckenberger?
Yes, I am here from Wayne County, Canton, Michigan.
Excellent. Commissioner Engel is absent tonight. Commissioner Foster?
I'm here from Wayne County, Canton, Michigan.
Yay. Commissioner Ocon?
I'm here, Wayne County, Canton, Michigan.
All right, and Commissioner Sting is also absent this evening. Commissioner Weber?
Present from Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
Commissioner Zubor, I am present from Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan as well, and Chairman Green?
Present, Wayne County, Canton, Michigan. And of course, we have our community planner, Patrick Sloan, and welcome to everybody. And Patrick, do we have anyone in the audience tonight?
Uh, yeah, we have some public in the audience, and we have a project representative for the item on the agenda tonight, which is Anan Village.
Awesome, awesome. Welcome to you all listening out there in the audience as well. Okay, so let's get right on with it. We had our last meeting September 13th. There are minutes associated with that meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
I got a motion to approve the September 13th meeting minutes by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote to accept that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Eckenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
I. Okay, so tonight we have an agenda consisting of only one item as listed, unless there's something late from staff. Anything late from staff, Patrick?
Uh, nothing else.
Nothing. Anything from the commission that we need to discuss in addition to the agenda item? Hearing none, seeing none? Do I hear a motion to accept that agenda of one item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all right, don't all fight over it now. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Weber to accept the agenda of the one item tonight. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that?
Sure, Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Eckenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Aye, okay, and that one item that we have tonight is Anan Village, where we are considering a preliminary site plan for property located at southeast corner of Geddes Road and Denton Road. We did table that agenda item last month, so properly, we need to remove it from the table. Do I hear a motion to do such?
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the Anan Village item from the table.
Second.
Who seconded that? Was it, was you, Shendru?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to remove Anan Village project from the table by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Atariah. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Eckenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes, I mean, I. I was trying to be consistent there. Patrick, could you give us more detail on this project and what it's all about?
Sure. From the last meeting where the project was tabled, I'll just give a brief synopsis. The project sponsor proposes a 43-unit, single-family detached condominium development on eleven and a half acres at the southeast corner of Geddes Road and Denton Road. And as a detached condominium development, they won't be on individual lots, the units won't. And at the last meeting, we had looked at some plans that had some recommendations for some changes. One of them was removal of the emergency access from Denton Road on the north side of the site, or on the south side. Emergency access from Denton on the north side will be paved, and the emergency access that was originally proposed on the south side, a grasspaver to Crystal Village, that has been removed. And on the plans this evening, that grasspaver emergency access is off the plans. There are a few areas of the plans where there are some remnants, a few pages show an access gate there that should remove the gate since there's no access there. Also, on some of the other plans, like the landscape plan and the photometric plan, they'll have to remove that grasspaver access also. Those landscape plan sheets and the photometric sheets, they were not updated since the last meeting because of the turnaround time, but the remaining sheets have been updated to show the removal of the access from the development to Oxford Court in Crystal Village. The most significant item that was discussed and the reason that the item was tabled at the September 13th meeting was due to the architectural elevations. At the September 13th meeting, the planning commission had reviewed the elevations, and the planning commission decided to table it pending the receipt of revised elevation drawings and additional details to the elevation. The elevations that were proposed at the September 13th meeting were the same elevations that were approved in 2019. However, with brand-new applications, since that previous site plan expired with a brand-new application, it's reviewed as a new application. So anything that was approved in 2019 is not necessarily the same as what would be approved in 2021 with the new plans and many new planning commissioners. The revised architectural elevations have been submitted for consideration. They also include a letter from the applicant describing the changes and the elevations themselves. The major changes to the elevations since the September 13th planning commission meeting include coloring the elevations and adding a gable roof with reverse gables instead of a hip roof. There are some inconsistencies between the elevations and the floor plans, as well as a photographic image of the elevation that is somewhat inconsistent. We recommend that the elevations be drawn to be more reflective of the photographic elevation that's presented, which includes higher reverse gables, shutters, and other architectural details on the buildings. We also recommend that the rear elevations and layouts account for the rear decks and patios, as well as door walls, which will be likely. So our recommendation is that if the architectural elevations are acceptable to the planning commission, we would recommend approval of the preliminary site plan subject to the applicant including a four-foot horizontal offset in the rear of each unit pursuant to section 26.06 of the zoning ordinance, and renaming Heather Place to a name that is not duplicated elsewhere in the township. This excludes any additional requirements that may be adopted or conditions adopted related to the architectural elevations. And the planning commission may adopt additional conditions for those elevations, including any conditions to be addressed prior to the final site plan review. So that concludes our review. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
All right, thank you, Patrick. This, this is not a public hearing, however, we do like to hear from the project sponsor. Is the project representative there?
Uh, yes, we have Mark Mahadjin, project representative. Mark, if you want to take yourself off mute?
Yes, we are here. Can you see us? Can you see us?
I can't see you, but I can hear you. Welcome.
Can we, can we see you? Okay. Should we, should we start?
Yeah. Yes.
My last name is Wara, W-O-R-A. You can call me Bob. I am a part of the ownership, and thank you for giving me a couple of minutes. I just want to tell you a couple of things. First and foremost, I want to alleviate any of your concerns about the aesthetics and the appearance of the buildings. Buildings that were submitted three years ago and were approved, they are basically submitted to the township primarily to get a preliminary site plan approval. The buildings that will be built have to be market relevant, have to be very pleasant, and something that would sell. This project got into a little bit of delay because of COVID, and we initially believed that we were just coming for an extension. So what we have been working on to develop when we get the approval are multiple elevations. I sent some of the sketches to Patrick. You will have the time to review all of those, and in the final design, our entire team, the five of us who are participating in these projects, coming from architectural and engineering backgrounds only, we are not builders or developers is our primary business. And all I can say this time that elevations will be something market relevant, very pleasing, and what the buyers and Canton demands. And you will have a chance to review those during the final engineering. At this time, we already have completed substantial engineering. Wayne County permits are in place, and we hope to start the project soon. So I'm basically asking to take you, take myself for my word, and see the results in final engineering. Bless this project so we can get going. With that, I say thank you.
All right, thank you for that. I want to, since we tabled this because of the aesthetics and the elevations, I'm gonna put our resident architect on the spot and ask Commissioner Zubor what she thinks of what she has seen with the package.
Well, I, there certainly have been some improvements. Sorry, I'm just trying to find that sheet in my packet here. Um, you know, there certainly are some improvements from last time, but, you know, I share the concerns that Patrick outlined in his presentation about the plans and elevations not matching up with each other, and then, you know, I would love to see some kind of rear exit from the space, you know, patio door or something coming out of the back. You know, specifically, I think that the, the gables make the house, the houses look a little bit nicer. Um, the little, small, tiny picture that they included on page 33 is, is a much, much nicer looking structure, though, than their drawings are. So, you know, I, I understand they want to keep moving on the project, and I understand that they're assuring us that they will build a beautiful, saleable product, but I'm not sure that what, what I'm seeing here gives me confidence in, in, in what will, what will be built. And I'm not sure that we can improve. I mean, I'm not sure I feel comfortable improving what, what I'm seeing here.
May I make a comment?
Go right ahead.
I also come from an architectural engineering background. I spent 40 years in architectural engineering. When we submitted this plan, we were looking for extension. Okay, in the meanwhile, as I said, we have been working on building this project, so we've been working on different elevations. So what you saw was a three-year-old product, and we had about, between September and this, we had about a couple of weeks to do some quick work, which is what we did. You will have all the time and all the authority to see everything that is in the elevations before the final engineering. The back door or the empty that you're talking about, fortunately or unfortunately, the site plan, which was reviewed and approved at that time, did not require that. We are working on a plan with a six-foot notchback that is required by the Canton. It would be there. And in the middle of different stages of developing different floor plans and elevations, none of them were in a state that could be submitted between the September meeting and October 4th meeting. It would be half-completed drawings. So all I can give you is, we are five members who are gonna build that. Three of us are architects, two of us are engineers. All I can give you is my assurance, and you will have full time to review this during the final approval process. But we need to get going because our Wayne County, we have substantially completed engineering based on the past approvals. Wayne County permits are in place, and that would expire. And as I wrote to you in my letter, that is going to cause a substantial financial hardship also. Building plans, building elevations would meet your satisfaction. All I can tell you at this time is just give you my word.
Well, I understand that the pressures, you know, are, are there from Wayne County, but we have a job to do, which is consistent with looking after the products that are coming into Canton. You had, you had maintained that the market, you, you're, you're going to do something that's going to be marketed valuable, okay, that people are going to want to buy this. The first question that I would have right off the bat is, I, I've not known any, any residential, individual residential scenario that doesn't at least offer an option of having an entrance at the back where you can have a patio and/or a deck, because people enjoy being outside of their homes. This seems to be exclusive of that. And can you expand as to why that's okay under, in today's market?
You are absolutely right, sir. The plans that were submitted was to get approval from the township. The plans and the designs that would be offered to public will have multiple options, multiple different elevations. Those are the one, when we approved, when we submitted the plan, at that point in time, we had no idea which builder or which developer we would be teaming up. So now that we are partnered to build, those plans are being developed. You have to offer multiple options. You have to offer options on the plans. You have to offer plans on the elevations and interiors also. Those things are being developed and will be presented to you for the final engineering review or final architectural review. We, we submitted because of the COVID, we got delayed, so we submitted the plan basically to get an extension, even though we are working on other simultaneous plans differently. So I do not know what additional explanation I can give.
But I absolutely. Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner Weber.
Patrick, I have a question, first of all, about mechanics and how all this works, and pardon me if this is an ignorant question, but this is preliminary site plan review. How, how does this operate if, and this is a big if. If we were to approve this with conditions tonight, what, how does it, we, what, what other, what other review is there from us that would occur?
Um, so if they, because it's a condominium development, there's two, there's two stages. There's the preliminary review and the final review. And the way that those will go is, right now, at the stage of preliminary review, we, we have the layout, a lot of the details of, of what the development will look like are, are addressed, and it's recommended by the planning commission, and then it goes to the township board for final action on the preliminary plan review. After a condominium project gets through preliminary review, at that point, they go through their engineering. They, they design detailed engineering plans. They go through the county for engineering review permitting for stormwater right-of-way permits, et cetera. They go through the township's engineering division for its engineering review. Once the project gets those engineering reviews from the township engineering services division and the county, including any review that may be required by the state, once they secure those reviews, they come back to the planning commission for final site plan review. The final site plan should look the same as it does now. There may be some modifications here and there from the plan, which we may look at at that point to see if, if it's anything substantial. But when we review the final site plan for a condominium, we know at that point that it's been engineered, that that layout will be final, and that they are almost shovel-ready to go in terms of, of that. And also, at that time, they should have their builder on board. If they're ready to break ground, they should also have a builder or more than one builder ready to go with their final versions of their elevations.
Okay, thank you. So that, that leads me to my questions, and I, pardon me, Mr. Chairman, but I have, I have two or three that I'd like to ask.
You go far away.
I guess, first of all, let me make a comment to the, the project sponsor. I, I'm gonna be quite blunt. I don't, I don't really see much improvement in what we saw last month. I'm not impressed. I understand you have a timeline to meet, but we also have rules and guidelines that we have to follow. And as, as Chairman Green pointed out at the beginning, we have a job to do, and if we don't do our job, the township board is, is gonna be questioning what our integrity is. We, we can't just take your word that you're gonna do something. I mean, if, if we, if we, if we did that all the time, then we may as well not have the zoning ordinance with standards in it. So I, I have a problem with that. Second of all, I'm reading your letter here, and you talk about how there's gonna be different elevations and different home plans, and that there's the, the developers coming in. I guess my question is, if all that's gonna be true, why, why, first of all, why isn't that developer here? And two, why aren't these, why aren't these drawings part of this package? We didn't impose a, when we tabled this last month, we didn't impose a deadline that you had to be back this month. We expected you to come back with, with a saleable product, and I'm not seeing it. And quite frankly, I think it's kind of chintzy that you guys just took a photograph of a building somewhere and included in your drawing and said, this is what it's gonna look like. I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not inclined to approve this. I think it's a, I think it's a, I think it's a poor package. I, quite frankly, would be embarrassed to bring this to a planning commission if I, if I was an architect doing this job. So I, I guess you can tell where I stand from this, and I, it's, again, I'm sorry if you have a deadline to meet, but that should have all been according to your plan. That's not our problem.
May I, may I say something, sir?
Yeah, go ahead.
You were coming to you after having gone through reviews by township for two years, having reviewed and approved. So when we came, we had no reason to believe that there is no, there is any comment that we have not taken care of. Our delay got, our, our approval got delayed because of COVID last year. It expired. But for two years, three reviews by the township, planning commission, board of director have reviewed the plans and have approved it before. That was our basis for coming to you. And then within two weeks, you know, to change it completely, it's.
Well, sir, two years ago, I wasn't on the planning commission. If you would have come to me with this two years ago, I would have said the same thing. So I can't speak to those who were on the planning commission then. I'm giving you my opinion. If my colleagues choose to vote in the different, different than me, then please let me finish. If my colleagues choose to vote differently than I, than I am, that's their prerogative. I'm giving you my opinion.
Well, to, to tag along with that, okay, and I agree with Commissioner Weber. This, to me, we, we basically wasted the month because they really, I, I was hard-pressed to see great improvement in what, what we were looking at here. And, you know, it, it does concern me that we're gonna present this to the Canton public. And that's, you know, that's who our onus is to. That's, that's, that's what we're doing this for, is to make Canton better. I don't feel that this product is doing that. There's, I've got a lot of ifs that, that just raise the flags, red flags. And I want to hear what the other commissioners say on this before I get into some of the other questions that I have. Commissioner Ocon, what do you think?
No, I think we're, I think we still have more approvals for this, so I, I mean, I don't mind working with them and trying to get them to, to stay on schedule and move along. Again, we have more approvals coming up anyways, so I think we, we would, I have no problem with continuing the process.
Okay, with, on, on that, let me ask Patrick this. Patrick, so let's say we approve this with conditions. Can our conditions be so tight that basically the final site plan review is, you know, they, they've gotta give, they've gotta wow us that we're not tied into something where they can say, well, you approved this, so, so we're just gonna put anything out there? Or can we, you know, basically get something a lot better by holding that final review back? What, what, what's our, our leeway in this?
Before, before Patrick answers that, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just add to that real quick? My, my concern about, I, I think I know where you're going, and I don't disagree with it. I, I understand what Commissioner Ocon is saying. But here's my concern. If we were to put, we're to put these conditions on, whatever they may be, and as you said, make them quite detailed, would, would we be assured that they would be done before they got to the township board? Because I, I personally don't want to present this package to the township board. I don't, I mean, they're gonna look at us like, like, what, what, what the heck is the planning commission doing? I mean, this doesn't meet with the spirit of what, what we're, we're supposed to be doing in the, in the, in the community. I mean, you know, maybe Commissioner Foster has, has thought of that, so she's on the township board, but I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the effort to try and help them move forward, but I, I think there has to be some sort of a, I don't know, timeline or something for them to get this done.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always looking for a win-win, so that's why I'm trying to see what, what leeway we have while still holding their feet to the fire on a good product for, for Canton. Yes, go ahead.
You'll be willing to accept any and all strictest and the most definitive conditional approval you can give, and we will meet that. You will give any, any tightest condition you want to write will be binding to us. In the, in that timeframe, you can even put in a schedule for us to put in new elevations even before the final approval. You will be ready to accept that.
Okay, that's pretty powerful. Thank you so much for offering that. Commissioner, Commissioner Foster, what do you think?
Um, so to Commissioner Weber's point, I wouldn't want to speak for the entire township board. I can only speak for myself. I would like to see something more complete before it gets to the township board, but that is my opinion. Um, I was hoping that when we tabled this, that we would have a more complete product to evaluate when it came back before the planning commission. Unfortunately, that's not what we have. So yeah, those are my thoughts.
Okay, so in your opinion, Commissioner Foster, a, a, an approval on preliminary with a bunch of conditions, you don't think would be sufficient?
Um, I guess I would want to hear what those conditions are before I make a final decision, but right now, I don't think so.
Okay, Commissioner Atariah.
Doesn't it have to come back to us for final?
For final, yes, but that, but, you know, we want to make sure that we have the ability to say no.
My, my concern is that even though it comes back to us for final, um, between the preliminary and the final, there's a lot of work done by the township planning staff and by the county, and so I want to make sure that they have a good product that they're working on before it comes to us for final.
Well, and my understanding from Patrick's explanation before was that this is the stage of what we're, we're, we're addressing the aesthetics and all that. When it comes back for final, we're looking at more of the, the, the engineering. I mean, it's, it's almost shovel-ready to go. I mean, if we wait till final, we're not gonna see aesthetic, we're not gonna see the aesthetic improvements until way down the road. So we're not gonna know whether they're any good or not, and, and for us to put the conditions on that I think Chairman Green is talking about, heck, we may as well have Commissioner Zubor design the project for it. I mean, it's just, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm all for trying to work with them, but I, I just, I, I think we're being asked to do too much here.
Okay, I appreciate that. Commissioner Atariah?
Yeah, so I kind of agree with the rest of us over here that the, the project sponsor should have done a better job, given the fact that they have engineering backgrounds and architectural backgrounds. You know, you should have presented the best product before us, rather than, you know, give us the, the worst product and, and ask us to expect something better. So I think fundamentally, you know, there was some carelessness or some oversight. expect something better. So I think fundamentally, you know, there was some carelessness or some oversight. And, you know, it should not the situation should not not have been this desperate. But, you know, I sympathize with them and but I I I feel that, you know, there's control. And at a later stage, we can probably rectify it. We could probably agree with Commissioner Okon that probably we could have some conditions like, you know, we kind of let them know that we require an exit on the backside, a door or something that's something substantial. And if that works, I I would be okay with it. But I I do feel that the project sponsors should have done a better job.
Okay, so do you feel then that the the conditions, the writing of the conditions is too extensive for us to in include in a package approval? In other words, it's just too much to to go through at this time?
I think if it's if it's if it's something very broad and if it's acceptable, you know, if I'm not an expert. But if Commissioner Zubor can come up with something that she can recommend, you know, you know, just at face value, and I know it's too much, but you know, and it's it's a bad precedence too. You know, we this would be a precedent again in the future. So, you know, I'm I'm fifty fifty on this one. You know, I would like to see the motion and then decide.
Fair enough, fair enough. You know, because I don't want to see, I don't want to see us designing anything. All right, this this should be presented to us and then we are supposed to evaluate. So I don't want to step away from that. So if we give conditions that have a lot of detail, that's really kind of what we're doing. I mean, we can we can demand that they have a back entrance. That's that's one thing. But to in terms of the aesthetic appearance, there's how do you measure that? How do you how you put a a condition together that that requires a certain thing? We have to see it to approve it. Now, what my question would be is, do we hold the ultimate authority to say no? I guess that's the bottom line is that i- if we got to sign a final site approval, can we say no? On that basis?
Well, for a condominium type of development, in general, we we can't treat a condominium different than we would a subdivision type of development or any other type of residential development of the same form. So in terms of of saying no and denying a project, we can't deny it if they meet the ordinance. And they have to meet, they would have to meet the architectural standards of the zoning ordinance, which the 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 largest ones are the fifty percent brick and the four foot offset in the back. There are some architectural standards in terms of good design that are both in the ordinance and have been used as precedent by the planning commission. So in terms of something that would be a denial, not not if they meet the standards of the zoning ordinance, it would just be a matter of getting the design up to where we want it to be.
May I may I say something, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
Again, I am, as you said, you said to trying to do win-win. You can give us a conditional approval, and you can give us one more month in that conditional approval. By that time, we can finish the elevations that we are working on. We will be glad to present that and a review and an interim review for review approval, whatever. But you have to realize why we are where we are here. We came with the idea of getting an extension of a project that was approved. And between the time of the approval and October fourth, we had about two weeks. Very hard to get people to work during COVID also. So when you say you do not see any great improvement, I agree with you. And it was done rather very quickly because between the last meeting and this meeting, we had about two weeks. And you can give us a conditional approval. We are not going to build houses that we cannot sell, because, you know, my work for it may not be good enough. But you can give us some conditional approval that meets your requirement. We do meet all the zoning requirements, and I keep on reiterating that project was reviewed and approved by Canton Township three times. So we were maybe blindsided by coming and presenting the same thing also. Not not realizing that there might be some additional concerns on the project that was already approved. It has come to light. We will address it. You can put conditions. You can put binding conditions. You can put deadlines that we can work with, and we will meet those.
Well, when the projects came before us for this this property, the two previous times, not that it's really should make any difference tonight. They these they were senior developments. Now, we may have looked at things differently. I don't know, but the point is that this is what we have before us now. And what I'm trying to get at is, and I believe me, I I understand your constraints. I I know I know what you're trying to do. But I I hope you're understanding what we're trying to do as well. Okay, so my question again, you see, I don't want to put us over a barrel and say, well, yeah, we got a conditional approval. And then, you know, a month later, two months later, you come back with elevations that are still unsatisfactory. And you then say, hey, we meet the we meet the zoning requirements. We're just gonna go with this. If you don't like it, just sue us. I don't want to get into anything like that. That's nasty. That is not the Canton way as far as I'm concerned. And I would like to see something progress a little bit better or not progress to become better.
Well, that is not our way either, okay? We you only make lawyers reach when you do that.
Chair Chairman Green, Commissioner Eggenberger's had her hand raised for a long time.
I am sorry, Nancy. Commissioner Eggenberger, please, please proceed. I missed that.
That's quite all right. It's a little hand in the corner. It's not easy to see. Here's my concern. As far as I'm gonna, I'm just looking at what have we seen so far? At the last meeting, the group was told, hey, these places aren't looking good. They need to be spiffed up. My understanding is they asked for this meeting, right? Patrick wanted it to be tonight, wanted to be on the agenda. But came, as I think we all agree, with places that don't look good. In fact, I'm not sure they didn't go backwards compared to what we saw last time. So so based on what I'm seeing, I don't feel all that confident that moving forward, we're gonna get something that's gonna look very good. But at that point, we're gonna be on the final decision, and they'll be saying, oh, you can't say no to this. This is the final one. We have to do it. All the same things we're hearing this time. It's not that I don't have sympathy for what's happening here. I I'm sorry that that you guys are in this position. But you you were told at the last meeting to come back with better drawings. That's why we tabled it. That's why we didn't say no last time. But you didn't. You didn't come back with better drawings.
The reason we asked for this meeting in a hurry, which we had not done in the previous two years, because we have, this is this is the true condition of our life inside. We have a potential purchase order in execution that we will lose if we do not get the site plan approval and proceed. That was the only reason to ask for the quick meeting. Because in in all honesty, you have to understand our point, because we believe we are bringing a project that has been approved. And then in two weeks.
That that's not what's happening here. You did it. I understand that you were confused that you thought it was approved, but it wasn't. And we told you specifically, if you came back, we wanted better drawings. So you came back telling us you're desperate to get it approved. But you didn't come back with better drawings. So I I don't feel that I need to approve something without good drawings.
Project was approved three times by township. You know, you can ask Patrick.
Sir, sir, we've been over this and over this. What happened to you? No, what happened two years ago is irrelevant now. Your approvals expired. So it's now as if that never happened. This is the standard. It's being applied now. It's not inconsistent. It's it's in accordance with the zoning ordinance. So we're trying to work with you here to come up with a solution. If you keep dwelling on the on the fact that it was approved before, then there's nothing we can do. But we're trying to work with you here to see what's a suitable solution.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
Patrick, let me ask this, and I guess this question goes to the applicant as well. I correct me if I did if I misheard something, but is the applicant willing to come back in a month with a better with a better plan? I'm not approving it now conditionally, but come back. Again, I guess we'd be tabling this again until, what is it, November first is our next meeting? Is that what I heard the applicant say?
I was hoping that you would give a blessing with contingent conditions. That was all I was hoping for.
Okay, so then my next suggestion is, and I'm not trying to oppose additional meetings on this group, but in an effort to try and work with you. Patrick, is it feasible to have a special meeting sometime between now and the next meeting? If they can bring something back to us?
Yeah, from staff's point of view, yes, we can. We can do that. We can arrange that with the meeting. There's not a public hearing. So there's no notification deadline that we're up against outside of the regular open meeting act. So that is something that we can do.
If we gave you, and I know this is short, but if we gave you what what's what's the soonest we could do it, Patrick?
We actually have a special meeting scheduled for October eighteenth, Monday night. There's a rezoning public hearing scheduled for that evening. So we do have a quorum that that is replied is able to attend that evening. So we do have a meeting scheduled that evening.
Could you get your stuff together in time to make it for that meeting, sir?
What what would you like us to show you?
I I'm sorry to laugh at this, sir, but I I think it's pretty clear. I think it's pretty clear that we need better, we need we need elevations that are a lot more pleasing than than what we're seeing. So what that is, what that is, we can't tell you till we see them. Because there there's it's just not, it's lacking, okay? It's just lacking. And and here's the part that concerns me. You, I believe, said that there are other plans and elevations at your disposal through your developer, that there was, I think you said that, that they had they had more.
Yes.
But it was not presented here. So it seems to me you have something that you can work with on this. Am I incorrect in that?
It was maybe my misunderstanding. I'm not asking you to tell me. Are you looking for completely developed architectural drawing elevations? Or we can show you the samples of elevations that we are planning to develop and will be you know, because I I need to understand the requirements.
Okay, so so the requirements are, you show us what you have in mind in terms of, let's say, four or five different different development plans and elevations. And we say, yeah, we like that. Or we say, no, that that's not gonna work. That's that's what it gets down to. It it's not something that we can say, well, if you do this, we'll approve it. If you do that, we won't approve it. I it it can't be that way.
Oh, no, I am I am not asking for, as you said, for you to design. I'm saying that with a sample of the plan and then elevations that we are planning to build and will be developing in detail architectural drawings, is that acceptable? Or this has to be fully developed architecture floor plans and fully developed elevations, which requires a much longer time to do?
No, they're schematic design drawings, but they need to look good. They don't need to be fully developed, but it's embarrassing to me as an architect to see a drawing that you brought before us where the floor plan and the elevations don't even go together. So you say you have three architects on your team. This is this is something I would never show any of my clients, let alone, you know, a public board.
So I think I think we've I think we've been fair with you, sir.
We understand your time constraints, but those those are not our constraints. Our constraints are the the final product that that we would progress into. And right now, it doesn't appear that we're going to progress. It appears as though we're going, you want us to give you an approval to move forward. And we're afraid we're gonna end up with a product that just is not suitable. And so we're trying to avoid that. We would love to help you meet your deadlines. But we can't do that at the expense of what we'd have to look at for the next fifty to seventy years in Ken. And it really gets down to that.
Me ask one more.
Chairman Green.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I would recommend I would recommend that we table the project right now. And, you know, we give them two weeks to come up with a couple of elevations that are suitable. And if that works, then it would be approved on that day, or else, you know, it'll have to be tabled once again.
One more question. I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I heard from our architect leader there, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name, that a schematic floor plan and elevation should be sufficient at this time for presentation to you.
We want we want to see intent, okay? Your intent. And that would and that would be something that we can digest graphically that allow us to say, yeah, we think that that's gonna be a good product.
So the schematic floor plan, elevations, or and with a couple of different options?
Yeah, we we want to see what 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 are the options you would present your customers for this project? Hopefully, hopefully, it's not just what we've seen.
Of course, it's not.
Yeah, so so we want to see what you would be presenting them. You know, I think that's only fair if we're going to submit approval.
Don't get me rings, friends. I'm not questioning anybody's fairness at all. You are a little bit blindsided coming for
I'd like to support the motion that's on the table.
Okay, we have a we now have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Acharya to table this this item for two weeks, right, till the that's till the eighteenth?
Yep.
Yes, okay. We have support by Commissioner Eggenberger for that that motion. Any further discussion? Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. So we we hope we hope for the better, sir. I mean, you know, that's you you can see what we're up against here, so.
Good times, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, let us go on. We have a couple of things to do as far as staff is concerned. We got some referrals coming up. BJ's Wholesale Club, Creekview Landings, Duncan, and Zar Plaza. Do I hear a motion to send those to staff?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion by Commissioners Uber and support, I believe, by Commissioner Weber to send those to staff for their review. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And and Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, and we also have a public hearing to set for that October eighteenth meeting. Alexandra and Ariana LLC. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved. Supports.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioners Uber this time. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes.
What time is that? What what time is that meeting on the eighteenth?
Seven o'clock.
It's at seven two.
Okay, so any anything else to add from the commission or from staff? Patrick, anything to discuss, anything in terms of any projects that are ongoing that we should know about, any developments? I noticed that the project at Geddes and Beck, they've got a lot of heavy equipment out there, so they're really moving a lot of earth. In fact, I saw barrels on both sides of Beck today for for that. Anything going on with the project near there on Michigan Avenue? I think you were telling me that they they were going for the tree removal approval the last time we spoke.
Uh, right, yeah, the industrial building over on Michigan Avenue. They they've gotten their tree removal permit, and they're working on getting their development start permit. I think they're pretty close to having that. So I expect that we'll be seeing some activity there in the coming weeks.
Okay, anything anything else that's going on in the township that concerns us?
What's going on with the gas station at Ford Dagerty, Patrick? What's going on with the gas station at Ford Dagerty, Patrick?
The one of the
Question.
The one at the northeast corner?
Yeah.
Um that one is um they're probably in the, they're probably still in the process of doing their engineering. Um the last few months ago, they got their site plan and review completed, so they're, they're done in terms of that. It's just a matter of them going through engineering, probably the county and the state to uh to get that done. So I don't know if they're gonna be doing any construction this season, depending on how that permitting goes.
Okay.
One of the items that was referred for uh staff, um we'd received a preliminary PDD application for Creekview Landings. That's at the northwest uh corner of Denton and Ridge, not necessarily northwest at that intersection, but it's um farther west from Denton. Um that's a pretty large one, uh four hundred and fifteen proposed units on two hundred and seven and a half acres. Uh we are just in the process of finishing up our first initial staff review, so um it may be a while until that one's ready for the planning commission. There's a number of, number of things that we have from planning, and I'm not sure if engineering has had anything yet, but um we also have yet to have our engineering consultant review the traffic impact study that they submitted, so um it's a large project, but uh it'll, it'll probably be some time before it's ready for planning commission review.
Patrick, what's the status of um the, the project that we approved? Uh I believe it was a car wash over an old Canton center uh north of Michigan Avenue?
That one, I think they're still going through engineering. I had a meeting with them last week about um some proposed architectural changes that they wanted to discuss, and they were doing some rebranding. And um my main message to them was that that fifty percent brick requirement is, we're still gonna be holding to that. Um so I think what they're gonna work on are some renderings, um upholding the fifty percent brick, at least that's what I asked for. And if they're rebranding it, if it's dramatically different, which I expect it probably will be based on some of the images that they showed, I expect that one would come back to the planning commission just for a revised elevation review, because um the planning commission has the authority to approve plan modifications for something that's already been approved without having the board review it again. But because it is a significant departure from the original plans, if they do proceed with alternative architectural elevations that are consistent with they showed me last week, that one may be back in front of the planning commission for um a revision.
Okay, and finally, um has there been any further interest in that property at uh um Beck and Ford Road, uh what would that be, the southwest of the property?
I haven't heard anything. I haven't heard anything. That's been pretty quiet.
Um it's an, it's quite honestly, it's an embarrassment to drive by that. Um you know, sometimes you see old cars abandoned there. Yeah, I just, I hope somebody is able to uh, you know, do something with it, or we get that taken down, because um I'd rather see just growth there, you know, just this wild vegetation than uh than see what's there right now. So anyway, we can't solve that problem, I know.
Yeah, Patrick, I have a question. Um what's the status of um Ridge Creek that was on, that we set a public hearing for, um but was pulled from the agenda about a month past back? I think it was called Ridge Creek.
Yeah, with that one, they had submitted revised plans and they requested um a public hearing, which we proceeded with, and then they requested to come off the agenda. And so we haven't heard anything since from Ridge Creek in terms of what their intent is, and and it looked as though like um Polte may have been working with them to try to move it forward, and then um I'm not sure if Polte's involved, it may just be saying, so I'm not sure if their intent is to proceed with with a reapproval or an approval of what they previously showed us or or what they plan to do. I haven't heard from anyone there in probably several weeks on behalf of the applicants. The last communication I think we've had with the developers engineer is um some of the concerns that um the neighbors in the adjacent development have had about some utility easements in terms of uh pulling utilities from an adjacent development versus from Warren Road, so um that was the last time I communicated with our engineer about that specific concern. But that also relates to some potential tree removal, so I think that is to be determined in terms of what their next move is.
Thank you.
Is there, um is there really a uh an effort to change the name of Patriot Park? Is that, is that really a thing, that they're gonna change the name to Ridge, Ridge Ford Park or something like that? I think I read that somewhere.
Um that I don't know, and I think that that might arise from the um the draft Parks and Rec uh plan that has been published. Um the Leisure Services Department has been working on an update to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And that's separate from the master plan that we'll be doing here, starting in the coming months. The Parks and Rec Master Plan, um I believe that draft plan is already online for um the public to view. And there was a presentation maybe a couple of weeks ago with the board where some concepts were rolled out for um for a couple of park concepts. In terms of the naming, I'm I'm not aware. I probably defer that to uh the Leisure Services.
Okay, if if so, I'm just one person, I know, but I think that's a terrible idea. I think we've been waiting for Patriot Park to develop all these years. It needs to continue. There, there's nothing wrong with the themes that we've had for our parks. You know, independence and um, you know, some of the others that we've had, so to to just name an intersection as a park, if if that's what they're thinking, I think that's bad. Anyway, that's just me.
Kind of piggyback on what Chairman Green had, when he asked you about the, the property of the southwest corner of Ford and and Beck. A lot of those properties along Ford Road, really from really from Canton Center all the way to the township border are either up for sale or have been sold. Is there, is there lots of noise about we're really developing all that through the, through there with residential or whatever, that that zone?
Um we often get calls from realtors. Um oftentimes, they ask about um if people can split property, and in those cases, it's very difficult to split because of having the required frontage and meeting the lot standards of the zoning ordinance. Um sometimes we hear from um prospective developers or realtors that want to know if they can rezone it for commercial or multifamily, and that's not something that the master plan supports. So I don't, I don't really get far into discussions in terms of those types of uses. Occasionally, they may ask about um the zoning or the master plan and how many units per acre the master plan would support, but I haven't heard any concrete plans in terms of assembling any lots for, for any kind of large scale development. But I think in the coming months, when we start to talk about the master plan and we look at the future land use map, I think we're gonna have probably a lot of discussion on the west parts of the township, especially the undeveloped areas where um you know, either development um will occur soon, or it has a lot of eyes on it in terms of the future use of those sites.
Okay.
So I, my ear pads are dying, so I need, I need to go. Do you still need uh me for a quorum? Or can I?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're just wrapping things up, um you know, so you know, feel, feel free to leave. In fact, uh if somebody wants to entertain the uh idea of adjournment, I'm, we're ready to hear it.
I move, we adjourn.
I approve, I second that motion. I approve it.
All right, I'm gonna depart from procedure. All in favor of a journey, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
I'll take that as a roll call.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.